But I'm not sure why.
We've had a, you know, gadflies who come from the great.
Good, we need people. Variety of experience.
Submitted in order, we said enough is enough.
You do, you do a lot of things.
Build a staff.
Right, right.
Just remember that you're under the desk.
Judge Edo.
Hot mics, everyone. That I wrote and right. Hey, I finished, I finished.
That's real.
Improving care coordination.
Nice to meet you.
Right, all right. Anything on project? Rock and roll. A focus on.
Mentioned it to me. So he was gonna be here to.
That's one of my little pet things right now. Yes. So that would improve their access. And beginning to go.
Do we have a quorum?
Confirming we have quorum.
Good afternoon, Madam.
Read my mind, thank you. Good afternoon, how are you? Let me just, let me swallow my cookie.
I'm going way down instead of.
So, good afternoon, every.
Good afternoon.
We'll go ahead and have Ms. Bo call the role for us.
Mary Baraxa.
Present.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Summer McBride.
Here.
Maricela Ramirez.
Here.
Frank Ramos.
Here.
Carol Segala.
Here.
Barbara Ferrer. Jacqueline McCroskey. Deanne Tilton Durfee. And Holly Mitchell.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you so much. We see that we've got a commissioner who's requested board's approval to remotely participate in today's regular meeting. Due to an emergency. Can you walk us through that?
Yes, we do have Commissioner Martinez who's joining us virtually. And we did want to confirm that she has not joined more than twice for this calendar year. And Commissioner Martinez, can you provide the reason for joining us virtually today under AB 2449?
Hi, everyone. I'm up in the Bay Area and helping my daughter through a health crisis, so I'll be joining remotely today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, wishing you and daughter all the best. I'll entertain a motion. To approve Commissioner Martinez's request to participate remotely. Under the rules allowed under AB 2449.
And confirming Supervisor Mitchell, we do not need an action on this item. For AB 2449 for her reason.
Great, and I just wanna either push back with or ask counsel to confirm. That, that all a commissioner ever needs to say is, is it's an emergency and not get into any details.
Um, no, so they do have to give a description of the circumstances because there are a few listed under that.
And so are those in categories like just health? Something to that degree, because I think it's really invasive. And so I just wanna.
Completely under understood the thought around that, but yes, it does. This legislation is pretty specific in terms of what has to be stated and it has to be very, it can be very minimal as Commissioner Martinez. Was very minimal in her statement as well, but they have to provide commissioners have to state which one of the categories of reasons. For participating remotely.
And walk me through the categories are.
I don't have the legislation up in front of me right now, but one of, one of those. What Commissioner Martinez is referring to is a need to take care of a child.
Got it.
For health reasons and you don't have to go into the specifics around that.
Got you.
The general statement around that is sufficient.
Thank you very much, my colleagues, getting very prescriptive as they sometimes do. All right, let's move on. So welcome, everybody. We've got some new faces. It's great to see folks. Let's begin with. And we have. Public comments on the consent agenda, please.
We currently do not have any public comments on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you so much. Can we please call the role? I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. I'll make the motion seconded by Commissioner Segala. Could you go ahead and call the role, please?
Mary Baraxa.
Present.
Astrid. Yeah, yes, no.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez.
Yes.
Frank Ramos.
Yes.
Kara Segala. And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to. Remarks by moi. So welcome back. I guess summer is over. That makes me very sad. Even though we were quote off August, you know, that doesn't mean anything when you're no longer in school. That's the last time you have a real summer vacation. We just keep working through the summer breaks, don't we? Adulting is hard. So welcome. It's great to see everybody back. I had the privilege of meeting with Carla yesterday and later with our consultants. Who asked me, you know, an interesting question about the vision for First Five LA. And I talked about my expectation of this board and, and us working together. To affect systemic change for our youngest shared constituency, those zero to five. And so. I'm glad that we are going through this experience to allow us to really articulate. What we know to be in the best interests of zero to five Angelenos. You know, as everyone is aware, we currently find ourselves in a rather unique. Position. We have an opportunity to build a truly innovative plan. Not just for first five, but also an opportunity to lead by example and show the entire state. What LA has in a plan. There's gonna be a lot of people paying attention to the work that we're doing and they're counting on us to get it right. And I have full faith in this board and staff that we will do just that. As we approach the finish line, I ask that you continue to engage and that really goes for the public as well. First Five LA needs the community as a whole, as well as the community needs First Five. At the state level, since we last met, the governor passed the budget and I was pleased to see investments. With ECE and rate reform. And which was a top advocacy priority for First Five LA. As well as investments to Cal Works, another priority that I've been committed to my entire professional career. Because I truly believe that providing families with the opportunities. To lift themselves up out of poverty is one of the greatest tools. We can have in guaranteeing a young person's success. Had an amazing opportunity in August to travel to Kenya with several of my elected colleagues. To look at their universal basic income program. Kenya has the longest running pilot in the world. The 12-year pilot near at about year six or seven. And, and to talk to people. Who have been beneficiaries of, of the grants and. Recognizing the impact it has on children. In Kenya, you pay for high school. Sometimes girls in a family aren't prioritized. And, and the first thing every family talked about was they paid school fees either for their own kids or nieces or nephews. And so as we talk about ways in which we can truly alleviate poverty, that's one policy we're looking at here at LA County. It was just a joy for me to, to learn how other nations are embarking on this same effort to improve the lives of children. We've got to help their families in a financial way. On today's agenda, we'll be presented with updates on the strategic plan and I look forward to presentations. That we'll hear and I thank you all for your continued work. With that, is there any public comment on the president's report?
Confirming there are no public comments on your item.
Any comments from commission members? Before we get into the meat of today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna hear from our fearless leader. Carla, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell, and thank you for sharing that example on Kenya. Of that. All of us to think about what opportunities exist and where there has been really good thinking. Welcome back commissioners. It is really, really lovely to be in community. With you, looking forward to the conversation today and to the First Five LA team present today. It is really nice to see a lot of you. Come and hear some of the good thinking that all of you have done for the strategic plan. Let me start by sharing what we have heard from you all, the board in regards to the strategic plan. We took comments from you all since January and have summarized some of the important issues that you're up for the strategic plan. First and foremost, you have been really clear that our strategic plan needs to have clear measurable benchmarks, really clear goals. And being really clear about how we're going to hold ourselves accountable as an organization. We have clearly heard from you as well that we need to use data to inform our decision making, to make programmatic financial decisions. We have heard that it is important to focus on results and impact and making that really clear to all of you and to the communities we serve. We have also heard from you that it is important that we look at the lessons learned from the pandemic. We, we. Out of the pandemic portal and not think that there won't be shifts in some of our work. And we have heard from you that we need to evolve our community engagement work, that we need to make sure we're reaching out to our community partners to inform the strategic plan. And lastly, sustainability plan is a discussion we had in the early months. Dressing our fiscal reality. So based on this feedback, together in partnership, we have been looking at our strategic plan for the last few months. The board has walked in partnership with us, has had a. By all staff members. We looked at a SWOT analysis and really had a deep discussion on. And doing all this work, we have discovered and legal has given us some feedback. And for the reset, we have three options as First Five LA. Number one, we either amend the current 60-page strategic plan and add amendments to the plan. Two, we have a new strategic plan completely. And then three is keep the strategic plan as is. Given all the learning that we have had in the past few months, we will go with a new. And what that will mean for the board is today's discussion, you will see new goals, objectives. Very, very exciting conversation today for some of your input on direction. And in October, you will see a draft of the strategic plan and a final vote will be in November of 2023. For the new strategic plan. And I want to make really, really clear, we are building on the foundation of. Yours of what this organization has done. This is not a whiteboarding, a new, we are not taking the lessons learned or the really good work that we have. But it does mean an opportunity to focus our strategic plan. And the reason for this, we've discussed several times with the board. We have a fiscal reality that really changed for all of us. In November 2022 because of Proposition 31. And secondly, when we conducted the landscape analysis after the pandemic, we have really clearly seen. Trends of what's happening with children and families in Los Angeles County. We discussed this with the board. We've seen upward trends of children and families receiving public assistance. We have seen upward trends of children whose parents lack secure employment and it is particularly worse by race and ethnicity. For certain communities and we have seen trends of extreme poverty increases. Because of that, we have discussed the new strategic plan with all of you and have offered the goals, objectives, strategies and tactics framework. And our consultants today will cover a lot of that. And lastly, we heard from you all, we need more community engagement as an organization. So I'm really pleased to share that part of this strategic plan will include. Community engagement led by our communities team in particularly Lee and Joaquin, if you could wave at the board. And just say hello. This team next week will be leading two briefings with community-based organizations and community partners, including parents and some of our. Community engagement work. I, I want to be really clear, this is a good start. And let us be really clear that this is a muscle that we will continue to build. So today we hope to cover some of these conversations. With you all with our wonderful consultant and we'll turn it back to the honorable chair to kick off that conversation.
Appreciate you. Perfect, thank you.
And one of the things that we want to share as consultants, so as many of you know, Chrissy Castro. And Rego have been leading our work on the strategic plan. Some of you have had conversations. Chrissy has had a family emergency and today we will have Ophelia Medina. If you could wave at the board, Ophelia Medina is serving as our interim director for policy. And she will help Rego today as we go through some of the goals and strategies.
Yes, okay, alright.
We have the best chair.
I was expert at passing notes in class. Ask you a note. That had been a major ooh. Okay, any public comment on the executive director's report?
Confirming there are no public comments on the ED's report.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move into the meat of today's agenda, which is our strategic plan. I'm not gonna say the word reset anymore because it's a plan and. We understand why. This is an information item, so I'll hand it over to Rego and staff. Thank you. For informational purposes, there's gonna be a break halfway through this item, colleagues.
Oh, thank you. Can y'all hear me? Is this clear? Yeah. Carla, can I confirm?
Can you move it up a little higher on your.
I can certainly do that. Is that better?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Can I confirm this, the end time for this segment? Because. How much time?
We have an hour and a half for this segment and we will probably need a break in between Regal, so if we go. Let's see, maybe if we start off and go till 2:30.
2:30 and then break at 2:30? Okay, so I'm gonna put my. Because once I start facilitating, I lose sense of time and so I want to, yeah, so let me put 2:30. Okay. Alright. Well, good afternoon again, Board of Commissioners. It's great to see you all again, at least most of you. Some are new to me and Mary, great to see you today. Robert is away, but good to see you. So I am here today to focus. Us on the goals and indicators that we've been working on for the strategic plan. So that's our focus for today. And what I want to start doing is. First, go through our timeline so that we all know what the timeline is that we're working under. And then we'll jump into that first part of today's session, right? So at this calendar, we presented to you last time. We were here with you in July and that day, as was mentioned, we generated quite a bit of input from you around the opportunities that you see in the environment and in the horizon. Those opportunities are really important because they're going to feed into the goals, the objectives, the strategies and the tactics. Or what you all called, called the ghost framework. It has haunted me from the first time I heard that and it will continue to do so. But I want to really pause on this because the ghost framework is a term of art. That this organization is using, but it is based on what the law requires you to have in your strategic plans. It's not just out of nowhere. But that ghost framework in particular. We have been working with your organization using a results-based accountability framework, right? So that whatever ghost is, and it turns out to be, you want something measurable, you want something that's clear and so forth. So that's what my colleague and I are bringing to this work, a results-based accountability framework. So using that, we iterated or we underscored last time that your goals and your objectives are your ends. That's what you want to get to. Right? And your strategies and your tactics are your how. So results-based accountability distinguishes between your ends, i.e. your goals and your objectives. And the means to achieve those ends, in this case, the strategies and tactics. So what we're focusing on is getting the goals and the objectives clear. So that over the course of this next month, we're gonna drill down into the strategies and tactics. Not putting the cart before the horse, right? So first the horse and then the cart. Sometimes organizations start with the carts and so we, we're trying to start with the ends first, right? So with that information in mind, we have been working with staff and today we have a draft set of goals and indicators. I'll say a little bit more about how indicators get turned into objectives later on. In, as Carla mentioned, in October, we'll be presenting to you a first draft of goals, objectives and strategies. Not the tactics, because the tactics after you approve the G, O and S. In November, then the tactics will be developed afterwards. Are you tracking me so far? Okay, so with that in mind. We have also, as Carla mentioned, not just engaged staff, but next week, we also have some sessions with community partners so that we can also get some input. It's the beginning, not the end of community engagement, right? So first of good. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if you weren't here last time, we are also caught up. Right, in terms of, again, the task for today that we're focusing on is to really get your feedback on the draft goals and indicators. That'll be the first segment. And then the second part is. In light of your reflections today around the goals and indicators. You might say, I do not like them, I like them and so forth. We'll, we'll calibrate together. Then after the break, we'll get into part two, which is, well, what kinds of strategies? Might make sense to help us achieve those goals. Right, so that'll be part two. So that we can hear those just as much as we heard your opportunities last time that helped us develop the goals. This will also help us start thinking about potential strategies, right? We want to build you in on the front end of this, right? And you'll notice that there's a little label that says racial equity and justice. Today, as we get into strategies, we'll also try to uplift in what ways. Might those strategies also get at the racial equity issues and, and value and interest that you have in addressing those. Okay. So I'll start off right now with a brief recap of. And I don't say this just to butter you up, but the incredible brainstorming that you all did last time. I left motivated, really motivated. It doesn't always happen, but this time I left. I didn't even think about the traffic down to Orange County. That's how motivated I was. Then we'll get into feedback and then we'll close with some reflection. Alright, so in terms of the brief feedback and the document is in your file, right? I want to start off by signaling that when we heard and we analyzed the many opportunities that you identified. They basically fell into seven areas. The first one had to do with the federal and state resources that are increasingly more. The first one had to do with the federal and state resources that are increasingly more flexible in terms of funding so that it enables you and local government to be able to fund more prevention work. Whereas previously, you've been really stuck within the health, the medical model and the social service model. What you cited there was CAL AIM, but also the California Youth Behavioral Initiative and as well as FFPSA, which I think you all are really familiar with that acronym now. So that was one, and that is an opportunity because now there are potentially more funds available for things like home visiting and things of that sorts that really get at prevention. What was also mentioned was the doula services as well, that can also start touching families much earlier too. Also mentioned was K-12, I believe Board Member Ramirez brought that up and how the K-12 public education system is now reaching deeper and deeper into the three and four-year-olds with the UPK as well as the community schools, which offers more engagement opportunities and capacities, right? I hope I didn't misquote you. Also, Board Member Mitchell mentioned the ways in which the county is also redefining kind of prevention, particularly in terms of housing, so that we're not just focusing on housing for those who are currently houseless, but also housing insecure. So there's these additional ways in which the county is orienting itself towards prevention. A whole host of initiatives from the anti-racism, diversity and inclusion, the poverty alleviation initiative, as well as the guaranteed income pilot, right? Those were also mentioned as a whole array of initiatives that really are trying to get at the root causes of some of the symptoms that we see, right? And this one really speaks to me around that deep poverty that you were mentioning as well, Board Member Mitchell. And so again, this is getting at the social determinants of health, mental health and other conditions that families with young children have to face. You also mentioned the global-scale events that are happening in 2026, the FIFA World Cup, the Olympics and Paralympics, that if harnessed well can then leave behind, that was the word here, play spaces for children zero to five and their families, right? So again, if it's harnessed effectively, it can leave a landscape that's much more accessible, playful, stimulating as well. You also underscored that there are a whole host of community stakeholders, from philanthropy, the business leaders to community and neighborhood leaders and others who are committed to both equity and this work. And then lastly, I think you all were humbly saying this, but you all said that there is an alignment in terms of policy and prevention among current policymakers. I think you all used the word progressive in particular, but state and local policymakers and being able to see this as an opportunity, a window of opportunity. So I thought that was very, very rich and as you'll see later on, we tried to map these opportunities onto the goals that started to crystallize throughout the process. Lastly, we also heard from you some additional thoughts around potential roles for First 5 LA, one of which includes a communication function, really making sure that you're communicating the prenatal to five perspective across multiple sectors. Linkage so that First 5 LA can be that linkage across different commissions, departments and others so that that first, that prenatal to five perspective cuts across multiple work that's happening. Navigation and community engagement. Again, that community engagement is really critical. Let me pause and see if this reflects what you said, if there's anything else that we missed. Did a good summary?
With regard to the prevention, I'm not sure if that was one of the ones, items I raised, but it's not just in terms of counties focused on housing, but we also passed a motion that really is looking at prevention and asking DSS and DCFS to work closely together to talk about prevention, to help families before they need the safety net. And so that's a new kind of focus and direction at the county level. So on the prevention, it's not just the housing, it's also a new way in which we are approaching our everyday work at the county level in providing opportunities to support families prior to our typical engagement, if you will.
Yeah, it's great to know that it wasn't just about housing, but also other departments.
Other forms of support.
Other forms of support, yeah. Anything else?
Is this the appropriate time? Because I know every time I see it, I think of new things for us to add. I'm sorry, for us to add to it.
Sure.
If others.
Yeah, just at the very top.
So again, for opportunities, and this is actually new, I think, since we met last. The legislature and the governor, probably still as we speak, are amending a piece of legislation that will alter MHSA as we know it.
So MHSA amendment?
Yes, and you know, the county's ask was to afford us greater flexibility. That's what we get, we'll see, but it could potentially be an opportunity in terms of the way in which MHSA could potentially be kind of reimagined and re-envisioned around mental health services for you. Second piece for me. Measure J funds. You know, every year, the advisory committee develops kind of the funding areas or buckets for measure J dollars. And in year three, this upcoming year, kids and play is one of the funding, one of the eight, if I recall, funding area priorities.
Gosh.
As of today, the board passed and approved the plan for almost a 90, just shy of a $90 million allocation to all of the measure J. And there's also some carryover funds from year two that haven't hit the street yet. And so it triggered when you talked about the Olympics, but honoring kids in play. That could be another opportunity to partner with community-based organizations, because there'll be a new funding source.
So leveraging, for example, measure J around that play and children and could very well align, as you said, with harnessing. So even funding organizations that stay on top of what's going on with the Olympics and with.
Guaranteeing that our children have some.
That's wonderful. And it's also wonderful to hear how the care-first, jails-last kind of framework that's embedded in measure A is creating more capacities and infrastructures.
Absolutely.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you for anything else, any other opportunities that popped up? Just as you heard the recap, anything else? All right, okay, so then let's go on to the task at hand. So we'll start off with part one, we'll take a break and then we'll come back to strategies. Alright, so let me start off by briefly, briefly explaining. I know I covered this in the memo that was sent to you all, but also for members of the public that are here or are listening, let me just cover the the three goals and the logic that underpins the three goals that you have before you. And then also share with you the logic that also underpins the indicators. And then we'll start with getting your feedback. So this statement that every child in LA County reaches their full developmental potential throughout the critical years of prenatal to age five, that's been kind of our guiding focus as we've tried to develop our goals, right? And so in thinking about that focus, we heard loud and clear from a number of folks, especially in the conversations we had with all staff, that in crafting these goals, we did not just want to craft goals that are about surviving, right? But also goals that get at thriving. And so you see that continuum at the very bottom. So if we developed three, four, or five goals and that's all about basic necessities, while basic needs is really fundamentally important because of the conditions that we've seen, at the same time, it doesn't get to the full developmental potential, right? So what we have co-constructed here are three goals. That first one is around children prenatal to five and their families having their basic needs met. And specifically, what we tried to do as we crafted these three goals is we referenced Maslow's hierarchy of needs that you see there, so that we have some cutoff lines. They're porous here, but at least we have some guidance right around where one begins and the other ends. So goal one really is about the physiological and safety needs. Safety isn't just about physical, safety free from violence, but also safety is about security, like economic security, having car insurance, because if you have an accident, that messes up your. So it's about that physiological and safety. And so making sure that when it comes to housing, food, economic security, et cetera, that's what that goal really covers. The second goal, it starts to stretch us a bit from the the basic needs and it moves us into the esteem and love and belonging needs, the psychological needs of children. And that goal is children PETA five having nurturing relationships and environments. And here I want to underscore that you'll notice that families don't appear in goal two explicitly. They appear in goal one because we know that the ability for a child to satisfy their basic needs is so, so rooted in the condition of the family, right? And so and a lot of the policies that we have in place target the family as a way of getting to the child, right? And so families have to qualify for on the basis of income and so on. Here, under goal two, we envision, of course, the role of family, but it's many, many more people touching the child from professionals to neighbors to extended families, et cetera. So here by relationships, nurturing relationships, we really mean the whole constellation of relationships that affect and impact the development of the child. The other thing that you'll notice here is that we added environment because relationships are so much social, but environments are coextended but beyond that as well. So it's a physical environment, like the play spaces, the open space, the parks, but also organizations and how they function. And so when you walk into a clinic, there's a whole system there that also affects the child and so forth. So this goal is not just about nurturing relationships. We know the literature is clear that nurturing relationships and function as protective factors, but also environments as well. The last goal is the one that I think we struggled with the most, which is, okay, so what does thriving mean? And in Maslow's hierarchy, and the way people tend to interpret Maslow's hierarchy, it's like self-fulfillment doesn't come until you're after 30 or 40, right? But it also happens, the foundations are set at this age, right? And so in our thinking, we came up with a goal that speaks to children prenatal to five having a solid foundation or basis during this time period that can function and support their wellbeing lead to lifelong learning and success. And here we know that the literature shows that there are some skillsets that are connected to, for example, economic success and language development and cognitive development that can help with lifelong learning. So those are the goals that we've co-crafted, again, underpinned by this idea that we don't just want to focus on goals that only speak to survival, although that's really critical, but also to thriving. What I also want to do here is show you one more thing before we ask for your thoughts on what you like, any suggestions. We tried to map these goals onto the opportunities that you shared with us. So when you look at the poverty alleviation initiative, the guaranteed income pilot, all the CAL AIM, et cetera, we see a direct connection between those opportunities so that it's not just First 5 LA as a standalone organization trying to change this with a budget of its size. It's in concert with, in partnership with these other initiatives that have more resources, more connections and so forth. The same thing you'll notice under the other goals as well, we try to align those. And we felt that there was a pretty good fit, so it's a good timing as well, right? With that, I just want to say that what we'd like to do then is kind of invite you to share with us kind of what you liked about the draft goals and potential indicators, any questions that you have, any suggestions? The indicators are listed here, they're on page six of your handouts. I'm not going to go through each one of those because it would take the rest of our time, but they're here on page six. So this is goal one with its indicators, goal two with the indicators, and then goal three and indicators. So let me conclude with this and then we'll open it up. The indicators are drafted right now, we want to hear your thoughts as we consult with more groups and thought partners over the course of the next two weeks. Eventually, we're going to select some of these indicators as the basis for our measurable objectives. So for example, goal two, I'm just going to take one indicator, early care and education. The indicator there, you know, an indicator is a data point that enables us to track something, right? To gauge whether things are moving in the right direction or not, right? So the annual percentage of children birthed through age five in LA County who have access to early care and education in and through a mixed delivery system. Let's say we choose that as an indicator, I'm not saying we are, but if you choose that one or if you modify it, we would then turn it into an objective. It would look something like this. From 2023 to 2028, let's say it's a five year, right? The annual percentage of children that have access to early care and education in a mixed delivery system will increase from 10% to 30%, right? So then we have a measurable, quantifiable direction. Now, for some of these indicators, they are population level and it's really hard to change them. What we're going to talk about later on, when we talk about tactics and strategies, is that it's everyone's responsibility to change the population level indicators, not just first five, right? We will add additional levels and scales of accountability when you select your strategies and your projects. Each of those will have their own outcomes, each of those will have their own performance measures and things of that sort. This is really important because in the work of collective impact, what they have really helped us understand is that we can all have a program that helps 500 children and families get beyond deep poverty. But what about the other 550,000, right? And so this population level is really about forcing not just us, but all of us really try to really impact a broader scale of folks. So I just want to make that, so for today, we'd like to get your thoughts around which ones you like. Is there something else that we're missing? We'll put that all in the hopper. And then as we engage partners in the next two weeks, we'll see if there's consensus around some key ones that we think are going to be very critical to move us in that direction. So with that, let's open it up. You have document six. Just let us know which goal you're interested in. Let's maybe start with goal one and Jacqueline.
No, I wanted to start with goal two.
Start with goal two, let's go to goal two, yeah.
I'm not trying to craft the goal language or objective language, but I feel like it's too narrow. And it's particularly too narrow for the LA County.
Okay.
So the, and I understand why you said that the language is children, not families, but without support for families, they can't create the environments for their children that they want to and that we want for them. But also without resourcing communities, we can't support families close to their home, right? So there's a, and one of the reasons I want to bring this up now is I do think that because you were mentioning some engagement sessions with CBOs and other people. One of the things, at least I'm super focused on right now, because I'm working on several of these initiatives, is that the more we turn our eyes to prevention in the county in particular, the more we understand that we don't understand the community landscape, that we have separate contracting processes for different county departments where departments don't even know if they're contracting with the same people. There is not a regional awareness of, I mean, all of us who work in this field know that we have X number of birthing hospitals, X number of welcome baby hospitals, you name it, right? Eight R and Rs, blah, blah, blah. They aren't in all communities. And so the set of resources in each community becomes really important. And not because I think they have to be exactly the same, but because there has to be a place in each community which is comfortable for families to access whatever it is they need. And so that to me is broader than this notion of psychological needs. At its base, in terms of Maslow, it gets to that, I know. But I think there's a lot of really important work that's going on in a lot of these county reform. work that's going on in a lot of these county reform discussions that are going on about what's the relationship between government and the, the community-based organizations and other community groups that, that families are closest to and have the greatest trust.
Okay. And let me see if I picked up on the, I'm, I'm tracking your point about communities. So the goal two, I'm just seeing it perfectly the way captured, that your recommendation is to then include communities in the goal statement itself. Come on, yeah.
As I said, we go, and I, I don't know, I'm not clear enough about the goal and the strategies, et cetera, but I feel like because our field of activity has been so much in the community that it would be a mistake not to think through the implications of that. So in how community resources support families in order to nurture children? I'm not saying it has to be stated in this language specifically, I trust you to figure it out.
No, 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 yeah, and, and we've been struggling with that question in this way. And then I, I'll go with, with you, or actually, why don't you start and then is it on the same topic here?
It, it absolutely isn't, I just want to thank the commissioner for that point because I'm a big fan of Maslow and I teach parenting classes and that's a big part of it. But a few years ago, what I started to do was unpack that and that's when I learned about the Blackfoot Nation that influenced Maslow's. And there's parts of the original hierarchy of needs that is often left out and it can sort of fit on top of Maslow's because it goes from self-actualization to community actualization, the cultural perpetuity. And that speaks, I think, to what the commissioner is saying because we often want to serve our communities by focusing on the child, but then we forget that they are within a community of people who are all part of their village, all part of making all part of helping them get to the point where they are able to thrive. And I think if we can start to ask ourselves, what is it that that village needs in order to serve the child? We, we want to serve children, but we have to serve the people who care for the children in order for that to have the
Yeah.
And I often wonder when we are doing something like a listening session and we gather input from the community about children, what do we do with the data that's not directly about children, but can inform the work of other commissions or legislators that are making those decisions that impact the people who are more on the peripheral, but still have a direct impact? And I don't know if that's the same thing you're saying, but that's what resonated with me. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, we did review the literature on, on the Blackfoot Nation and, and the connection between Maslow's hierarchy. And yes, the basic difference is that ultimately Maslow individualized it to the individual versus the collectivity. And then the other one was that in Maslow's thinking, it, there's a power and control relationship between institutions and individuals. Whereas over here, the, the power relationships were more horizontal. So we did review it, we just noted that because you're you were calling it a North Star, I think you're calling it a mission now, says all children prenatal to five, because it already is spoke, and by legislation you have to focus on. That's why we chose to keep children as the focal point of the goals so that we can measure progress there. However, the, the, how we work with communities is something that it's been at the top of our radar. The, the issues that we've been talking about are things like making sure that as we define communities, we are as capacious as possible. For example, we can define communities by geography, but then it also can exclude communities that aren't located just in a geography, right? And then you have communities that for which there are very little quantity, quantifiable data. So for example, in the Native American community, for instance, but also other communities. So we've been having a pretty robust conversation around how we want to include communities in this. The, one of the issues with putting communities in the goal is that then how do you measure it? But at the level of strategy, that's where we can then make some decisions based on the objective that you're trying to achieve. Right? So once we know what indicator you're going to choose, then when you think, when you think about strategy and tactic, that's where we make sure the equity piece and the community piece comes in and we really call it out. So I appreciate the comment and also the flexibility of us kind of thinking through this. But I just want to say that we're, we're aligned around making sure we are thinking about the role of community. The other piece too with community is that public systems, although they impact outcomes, they're not the sole determinants of outcomes for families and children, right? Also, communities play such a major role. In terms of school systems, only twenty percent of a child's life is in the school, eighty percent is in the community. Right? So we're going to have to really think through that.
And the last thing I would say about that is, and I appreciate you fleshing that out, but with the cultural perpetuity, it's about sustainability and not necessarily just like environmental sustainability, but sustainable programs courses and supports so that as budgets fluctuate, as policies change from legislation to legislation within our communities, whatever that looks like, or however we define that, they don't become more vulnerable with these changes.
So that's the cultural perpetuity component?
Yes.
Yeah, so that community capacity so that they can be resilient and despite the shifts that happen in the environment, that's going to be really critical, right? That we build those muscles in our community so that we can be resilient despite the environmental changes? Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Martinez, I just want to make sure you can hear us all, okay? You could, okay, great.
Thank you, good, Commissioner.
They're oriented and what we can gather changes. So I think in each of these, when I first read them, I agree that the component of the community didn't, didn't appear to be here. But if we're looking at it as strategies and also as training elements and that are sensitive to cultural diversity and equity, then I think that we are really looking at something that we more, it's more of our vision that we had to begin with. So I, I do agree, thank you for the
Okay, I'm glad that that's standing up, yeah. And, and also Monday and Friday of next week, when we engage community partners, that's the central question. Like, how should we envision community engagement in this whole effort through a strategy? Right? So we're, that's the central question that we have for that.
Yes. I agree so much with all those comments. I am, want to be a little more specific about the goals. I landed on mental health because that is such a critical need in every situation where we see a poor or bad outcome. Mental health services would have made such a difference at an early, when a time, and that's not just for parents, but clearly for the parents, but also for little kids. There's a critical need for people to understand how to treat little kids. One opportunity we have, we just have legislation on the governor's desk that's going to enable certified child life specialists to provide grief and loss counseling and receive victims' funds. And this is particularly relevant for little children who witness but that's not my point, that wasn't what I wanted to land on. When you say mental health, there's such a broad, such a broad need there and, and it's such a huge topic right now. But it's kind of a non sequitur, the way it's stated. All of the other areas talk about what would be a, a measure of, you know, improving the situation. I don't think that the issue is to look at the number of mothers who display signs or symptoms of prenatal or postpartum depression. The question is, are we responding to it? Are we recognizing it? Are we treating it? Do we understand it? And are we, are we protecting the children and serving these brand new members of our society, newborns?
No, great point, great point. And yeah, this is the kind of feedback we want, because if there's something about the measure that's not resonating, we got to capture it now. And so that as we get into the priority setting, we have the right measure, right? So let's just take that suggestion, Commissioner Tilton. So let's say it's not just about whether they're exhibiting and displaying these signs, but rather that they're accessing the services to address, right? Then we can turn that into an objective and say, over the course of five years, we're going to increase the percentage on an annual basis from five percent to thirty, whatever it is. But then we take that indicator, that's the right indicator, we turn it into a measurable objective. So thank you for that. I, Commissioner Baraz, I know we're in DMH, so one of the things that we've been in conversation with Dr. Bird as well, as the Mental Health Services Act planning process is underway, is making sure that the zero to five perspective, and I know first five L A is at that table as well. So this mental health component is so, so critical. And so I don't know if you would like to comment on what's going on there.
Yeah, I do agree, I know the department is in the process of expanding our zero to five services. And I, I do think the piece about working with the family is so critical because in addition to increasing our zero to five services, we're really working on increasing the parent-child connection, right? Because that's, that's your basic need, right? That's starting with your basic need and being able to self, self-actualize. So I do think that piece is very critical in making sure that the family has that community connection, that community support.
Yeah, yeah. And so the other piece, if I may, is that again, first five L A doesn't have to be a solo act here, right? There are efforts within the Department of Mental Health through the Mental Health Services Act and others that also are flexible in terms of prevention dollars, right? So we can link the resources there to the efforts that are happening here and magnify the impact, right? That was the two thirty. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, let me just change my, my class. And it's totally fine with me, I just So if we go till three, we would still have a couple of minutes for strategies? Yeah, okay. All right, let's keep going, who'd like to go next? Commissioner, hey.
Um, I'm, I'm stunned by the fact that we're actually looking at all these factors and I'm also wanting to get some feedback from you and engage in the community. What kinds of answers are you, or guidance from them are you looking for? In terms of asking them what would help them accomplish these goals, because I think it has to be driven by the community. I mean, the community has to engage and each, not every community is the same. I mean, I have some ideas, but then I would be talking from my own experience, not from their experience. I'm actually interested in, in their input and what they see in their community, what would be added to that community. I mean, Deanna and I both know one thing, and that is that isolation of any family is the biggest contributor to the, a danger to the child and, and being child-focused, but I'm also looking at the family. How does the family create an atmosphere of safety for themselves or their child? And how do they engage in the, in, in the community? How do we build a community that's safe? Like, how do the people that live there see that? For those of us who live in relative safety and suburb, in, in a suburb that has parks and has access to, you know, to farmers markets and, and activities for the kids and and school center kind of places where families can go. What is a family living in, in a poverty area of our county, how do they see that? What would they like? What would make a difference to them, other than enough money to buy food and a refrigerator? Et cetera, not worry about that, but what are the other things that could be brought in? You know, I have friends that are very actively on a national level, looking at ways to equalize income. You know, the idea of how do we create a system similar to the one that's in Australia and other countries, well, I'm Norwegian, so that's there, where you equalize and people take away that worry. If that worry wasn't there, what would they want added to their community? I, I would love to hear back from a community rather than putting it into into words that I, what I think. Because I'm probably wrong.
Uh, I'm getting loud and clear that you have a strong interest in communities, right? And the, the two things that I, I'll just share with you in, in, in reflection and in response to your question, I think one is we're going to start finding out more explicitly a response to that question next week, Monday and Friday, when we meet with community partners and some residents and parents and or mostly partners, I think, and I think some residents as well, looking at Carla on this one, but we're asking them two questions. One is what does community engagement look like that's going to be meaningful around these goals? So that's the first question. They may say nothing is good, or are they, right, but we want to create a space for that. The second question is, what would be the best way that first five L A can support that? Right? Because that way we get to know as an organization, what are the do's and don'ts, right? How, what, what should communities engagement look like and what should it not look like? What should first five L A's role look like and what should it not look like, right? The history of public sector systems engaging communities of color and low-income communities has been really terrible.
Yes.
It's just been really terrible. It's part of systemic racism, it's about marginalization, violence, exploitation, extractive. Most public systems historically go into communities, focus group, give it information to technical experts, and then those technical experts give solutions to them, right? How many of you want to reproduce that? None, I don't think any of us want to do that, right? So we know that that history is very patterned, it's really clear, right? So this is why we need to be very intentional in not reproducing that, but how do we disrupt that? A couple of things are really clear and, and one is that the literature is clear that there are certain muscles that communities need to have in order to be able to change conditions. One is leaders, resident leaders, parents as leaders, a critical mass and investment in leadership development, because you need an actor, right? The other is that we know that community organizations are also critical because in communities where many are struggling financially and have multiple jobs to make ends meet, it's hard to sustain a long-term systems and policy change initiative. So the burden falls heaviest on folks who are surviving, right? So that's where community organizations aligned with missions at the local level, at the community level are really, really critical, critical. The other is networks, making sure that they are networked with places like First Five L A, philanthropy, other social justice organizations. And the last muscle is community organizing campaigns of some type, because that's what activates people and so forth. So we know that there are some frameworks that where we can make sure that your investments are creating capacities in community for communities to determine what they want, how they're going to get there, which is, is the question that you posed, so that rather than us imposing, it's really coming out of their work. I think the tensions, not the tensions, but the issues for first five L A will be around what if communities come up with items that are outside of your strategic plan, right? So those are things that you deal with at the level of strategy and tactics and protocols, just to make sure that there's some degree of alignment. But those, I think, are problems you want to have versus the other kinds of problems where, where we reproduce the history of, of these public sector institutions. I'm sorry, I went off, I, I'm
I, I guess my concern has always been access to excellence, but the idea of, of not just giving, we have traditionally, I mean, and I'm talking about being part of a system, we've given them a list of things that we think they should have.
Right.
And then we don't, and they might be right. It might, we might be right on that list, but we do nothing to connect them to the essentials on that list. We, we let them figure it out. And if there's one thing is like they, they want a warm handoff, they want somebody to take their hand and say, hey, listen, you've never, you've never believed us, you've never had faith that the services were there. So can we help you find the services by, you know, making sure you are connected?
Right.
You know, and, and it's, it's frustrating for the, for people to come say, yeah, yeah, I mean, I got that, that list, and that list I've got a million times. And I call, nobody answers, and it's like that, I don't know where the resources are. So, and we did talk about this in small groups. We talked about where to locate services so that individuals know that they can get them in every community. And I, I personally believe that schools are a really good place to put them because most people in this city are walking distance from elementary schools. And the idea of being able to give them choices in a location that they can actually access.
And that's close by, and I think that's where that community school initiative that's trying to transform schools so that it goes beyond just the funding, but literally transforms schools so that they have a deep community engagement muscle. There's family and community engagement workers at those elementary schools, you can have wellness centers at the have neighborhood leadership teams supported by schools and so forth. So I think we, we're, we're on the right track because if folks can't even access resources, right, then, then their basic necessities might not be met. Is there anyone else?
Who are the community partners that you'll be meeting with next week?
I will defer to Joaquin and Lee. I will defer to Joaquin and Lee.
I think it'd be helpful just since we're interested in it, just to give us a context in terms of who you'll be.
I can give you some examples if I have a second to find them.
Okay.
That's another comment. And then, yeah, okay. Um, I think I saw two hands up. Can you raise, no, how many? One and two. Okay.
Um, so one of the questions I have just in regards to your meeting with community partners is, will you, um, touch on some of the more granular data points? Like, one thing that sticks out from one of the presentations we received was how, for example, um, and I could be wrong on the exact ratio, but it seemed that more African-American families access things like CalFresh versus home visitation services. So in talking to these community partners, will there be some investigation into maybe why families access some services and not others? Because we can make all of them available, but if they're still in a situation for some reason, for them to not access the service, then that can inform once we get to the str, the strategies and tactics.
Yeah. So, um.
Rego, can, can we add, um, some framing for the community partners, um, conversations? Um, so we are having one briefing with this really small group of community-based organizations on the eighteenth. Um, and then a larger one with R N G's and, um, Lee will share some of that information. But the granular piece is part of what we hope to be part of. We're, we're really clearly hearing from the board of community engagement strategy, very clearly. And I think it is that part of how are we going to continue to grow that muscle? But these briefings will be on two main issues. One, feedback on the goals, um, from communities so that they don't hear it the first time after, uh, the board has looked at it yet in November. And then the second will be what is community engagement looking for you on? The, uh, question you're lifting up about, uh, deep authentic community engagement is part of what we'll be working out with that strategy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did that answer?
Perfectly. Yes, thank you.
Um, I didn't think about it before because I jumped into the, the one that was the top of my mind. But will, will we have additional, uh, conversations about these indicators? I'm, I'm concerned about a number of them. And I'm concerned because, as you know, we go, I've worked on a lot of indicator reports.
Yeah.
Um, starting with the first children's scorecard in nineteen ninety-eight. And, and you really do want to think about measures that are sensitive to change. I know you mentioned population level, um, but even with a lot of partners, there are a number of these measures um, that, uh, we may not see changes in, right? And so I, I hope we're not, that this is a step on the way there. Because I think that, um, that's where First Five could really be helpful. And it could, in the data, could really be helpful to us if it's much more targeted to what we specifically have to offer.
Can I, can I ask? We agree with you on that. Uh, there's two ways that you can still, uh, after this meeting, feel free to contact us and we'll be able to meet with you and go through each one of those. If you'd like one-on-ones to do that. Um, and then we are, we're also doing a couple of other consultations to be able to get to the right indicators. Those are going to be brought back to you in October. So you'll be able to, uh, review them again before a final decision gets made. So yes.
So one of the things that, that I, I think a lot of communities are very used to are, uh, various agencies coming in and questioning them about what they want or sort of postulating things or having conversations. I'm going to ask this question. If you're having these focused meetings and you're meeting with individuals from the community and they, and there's somebody that comes up to you afterwards, this is hypothetical and says, right now, my acute need is this. I need somebody to respond to this need. How are we as a group going to respond as a demonstration to that individual, to that family or to whatever? How are we going to act to meet that need as, so that the community has an aha moment? Is that they're serious about making a difference here? These are not just, we're not just talking about it. I, I mean, I would like, I'm just, that's just a thought. Because I know if I'm in a, in a meeting in a community and somebody comes up and says, there are four or five of us that have an acute need right now, that we would be able to give them, figure out how to give them a warm handoff. That seems pretty basic, but that's just a question that I have.
Um, hey, so there's, uh, the, the hypothetical that you presented already, um, moves us past prevention, so to speak, right? So part of it is being able to get to prevention before a real acute need happens, right? So I think part of what we're trying to do is, uh, make sure that we select strategies and later on tactics that gets at prevention. But if someone does bring up a need of that sort, you've all mentioned, um, that one of the roles that you want to play is make sure that there's navigational capacity in and across systems, right? So that if that is, if that comes up at a mental health meeting and the need is housing, we don't say, oh, we're about mental health. We're not about housing, right? Uh, so that's really about systems capacities, connection between community-based organization systems to make sure that in those instances, instances, there's the ability to connect folks to a wide variety of resources that are really going to take care, not just of the urgent moment, but, but very systemically, uh, help that, um, family, that individual, uh, get to a place where they're not in an emergency mode. So I think that systems piece, that could be, uh, a strategy. Well, we do have a strategy that we're thinking about with systems change, right? So we can, those are the kinds of things that we can make sure there are pilots, there's initiative that really, uh, ensure that that's working well, right?
I'm just trying to build confidence from the community that we're actually serious.
You know, it's interesting. I think we all, of course, have different perspectives. I, I don't know from my perspective, the work I do every day, that that hill is that steep. Have ongoing relationship with community and there's trust there. And I think we will always have people in the room who, if that hypothetical would happen, would figure it out. I just, that's my experience. That's what I believe. And I, I believe, you know, First Five, um, has that street cred, if you will, in the community. But that's also why I asked the question about who the C B Ls that you're reaching out to. Um, I'm curious to know. Right? I was trying to lean over and say.
I know. That was not a hypothetical.
What are, um, organizations that we've reached out to that I'm going to give you a sampling of who's coming on Monday? Like Community Coalition, uh, Black Women for Wellness, Calis California, Crystal Stairs, um, Wine Guard Foundation, Families and Schools, Long Beach Forward, Act of San Gabriel, and that's the like. And then on Friday, uh, a separate, uh, session for the regional network grantees for Best Start Effort, which include Children's Bureau, um, El Nido Family Service here in the, in the room with us, um, uh, Rising Communities, uh, California, nope. California, what? Well, C H C, but they're now called Rising Communities. And, um, the nonprofit partnership, and I'm missing one. Ah, Padala Resninos.
Beautiful. Yeah, beautiful. So. Thank you. I think that just kind of gives me a context. We talked about the community kind of as, you know, a generic entity, which we know it's not. So that, that is helpful. And, and I also thought about it when you talked about wanting to make sure that we have people there who have agency, who, um, just have agency. And so I thought about like, like, some of the organizations you mentioned, I jotted down because I can't trust my memory, but I thought about even like connecting with some of the funders like Liberty Hill, who support organizations across the board to kind of help build agency. So thank you for the list. I think that's helpful.
You go back. Yeah.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, we need to be mindful of that. And thank you. We do.
And that the last couple of comments have gotten us into strategy already. I'm wondering if we can open it up to strategy already, like what we just said. So, uh, so maybe we can start populating the other one around strategy.
Let's hit, uh, Commissioner Ramirez, who hasn't spoken, so I don't want to miss you.
So I had Commissioner Ramos raise his hand. And then maybe can I go to Commissioner Ramirez? So.
And if I may just interject, um, Commissioner Martinez is having a hard time hearing. So just want to remind commissioners to speak into their mics loudly and clearly.
And I won't take it personally. I don't feel like you're going to be yelling at me. Commissioner Ramos.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to underscore the community portion. And we've been talking about that. I think we're all in agreement that community is key. Um, but just as we move forward, we need to remember to go back to the community. And I just wanted to add this one, uh, final thought. Community is C B O's, is our families. I think it's also our staff here at First Five L A because we have a rich opportunity um, to engage them in the future without needing necessarily to, uh, reach out to families, et cetera. Because the families are here too at First Five L A. So I just wanted to underscore that portion that we have an opportunity. And you did mention that, by the way, that staff had been spoken to. But moving forward, let's continue to do that as well, because we've got a lot of subject, subject matter experts that are where the family had too. So, yeah, um, it, because my other job, I, at D C F S, it's, it's very difficult at times to engage families because we don't, they don't come to us, right? And we talked about systemic racism of all systems. And so it's very important that we continue to push forward and persevere so that we can, at the end of the day, know that we spoke to the right people, which is a lot of what Astrid and everybody else was saying. We need to speak to the right people and somehow show supports. And First Five L A can't do it all, but we need to show support so that people go, okay. All right. It wasn't just the same old spiel that we hear every couple of years and they move on and checked off a box. So I, I think we're on the right track.
Commissioner, I was, may I ask a question around that? So it sounds like it, uh, if it is one of the strategies, I'm, I'm right behind you. Yeah, we should put community engagement, right? Or whatever term. So that would be one strategy that we definitely need to make sure we strengthen, we, you know, build. In what way, for example, might First Five L A help D C F S with family and community engagement? Any thoughts on that?
Well, we know that this, well, D C F S knows that the state requires child and family team meetings. And so those are meetings that where the parent is supposed to, the caregiver and or parent is supposed to be able to utilize their voice to tell us, to tell the group, the multidisciplinary team, which may include First Five L A based on bandwidth. I don't want to commit, um, First Five L A. But it's working together really as a team to make an informed decision and allowing, and I say allowing, because sometimes we don't allow, allowing the parent to make, to tell us what they need. And so I think the child and family team meeting is a great opportunity for that day. That's, that's one strategy.
And I think Frank is also important that D C F S, you know, that, and you know, I feel about this is that there's a support system for the worker, so that the worker is seen as, as part of the community trying to find a solution rather than as the opposition.
Yes.
So that's a very difficult position to put a D C F S worker in and also puts them at odds with, with the community. And I think as a strategy, the idea of incorporating, uh, social workers and, and supporting them as a positive force in that community towards safety and et cetera, and making good decisions.
Um, I would. I suggested that's a systems change strategy. Yeah, that building that team, nurturing that team, supporting that internal team is a way of, um, making sure that that system is performing well, right? Um, Commissioner Ramirez?
Uh, thank you. I, um, wanted to go.
Can you speak to the mic?
Sure. I wanted to go back to, um, indicators on, on goal number two for early care and education and healthy food access. So I guess my, my question is like, you know, the word access is several indicators. And I'm just curious like how we move beyond access to actual, um, you know, participation or, you, you know, active involvement in. And I wonder if maybe that's a part of the strategy, but that is a question I have about some of these indicators.
Would, would you be implicitly recommending that we look more, let, more at participation and involvement as the?
Absolutely. I think that that's really important because, for example, I mean, who has, you know, early care and education? One could argue that everybody has access to it, but maybe, maybe not.
It's the actual utilization and participation.
Participation.
I got it, got it. Anything else?
I, I would just add without, go ahead.
Oh, I just had a quick question and forgive me if I should know this, but the community partners, are there foster care agencies and what role are the conversations being had in that space?
Uh, let me ask if there are any in that list, do we have any? But okay, then that would probably be next level engagement. Um, yeah, so, but it sounds like your recommendation is to, for us to reach out to, uh, agencies that are providing foster care.
Yeah.
Got it. So we got that as a recommendation. Okay.
And given the, the, the amount of time we've spent talking about communities, now that we've kind of heard the initial list, if people have other ideas, let's be, be sure and provide it to staff. I just wanted to go back, uh, to goal one, as we talked about yesterday, under economic security, the first indicator. I'm measuring, um, trying to reduce the number of children in L A County living in poverty. And, and I would add a second one, because, because I think it requires perhaps sometimes separate strategies and, and perhaps up to us to prioritize to, uh, reduce the number of children birth to five in L A County living in deep poverty. When we recognize their level of vulnerability. Um, and sometimes the, the, the different programs that they have access to. So I would add that.
Yeah. I'm pausing on that because I'm, I'm trying to, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to visualize what that would look like, right? Because, uh, we tend to just say, it's the poverty line in and of itself is really tough to live on just with that. But now it's like, it's like, uh, a segment within families that are living below the poverty line is deep poverty, right? And if you envision a child prenatal to five that has only seen and experienced deep poverty, right? And so if we were to select a, an indicator like that, we'd probably have to really figure out who and where families live that are living below or in deep poverty, right? So, yeah.
And, and I think we figure that out the same way. We know the number of children that are living in poverty because we know the family, uh, income level. And we know the deep poverty income level and those children. I think it would be the same way that we would find children who live in poverty. Commissioner Martinez, anything from you? I, I wanted to make sure you could hear us. So next time wave at me something just to make sure that we, that we see you and include you. Any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you. No, I feel included and seen. I, I appreciate that. No, I think all of these questions are, um, incredible and thoughtful. And I concur, especially with the community input, um, concerns and questions. So thank you.
That's come out loud and clear. May I just transition us for a little bit? I'm not sure how much more time I have. I've lost.
I wonder if we take a break right now because it's a nice time to have a break. And then, um, when we come back, you have probably, uh, let's see, three, uh, about thirty minutes.
Okay. All right. So let's take a break. Do you want to do a five-minute break?
Yeah, five minutes. Please, we'll be back at three oh five. All right. Thank you. Ask people to come back. So we can reengage. Going to ask the public to go ahead and take their seats. It's 3:05. Right. I'm going to ask the public to take their seats. It's 3:05. Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. I'm so appreciative of this time and that you're giving to this topic. I am also feeling like I never get this amount of time with board, but I'm starting to feel like I'm freaking out. Like, my gosh. So Carla mentioned that we can go till
Uh, 3:50?
Okay, 3:50. And then we'll transition over to the topic. Okay. Let me set this up. So we now want to transition to a slightly different topic, but they're all interconnected. If you still want to come back to goals and indicators, we can, because we can toggle between these two. Now, this question we want to move into is around strategies and key roles, right? And just want to say that the question that we have is, in light of these draft goals that you saw and some of these indicators, right? If we want to really make an impact in that direction, what are the kinds of strategies that would really help First Five L.A. achieve those goals? We've already mentioned community engagement. So really being very robust around that would be really important. But what other kinds of strategies come to mind for you? And it's a brainstorming session. So whatever comes to mind will jot up there and then we'll find patterns, right? And then as, as we have that conversation, if there's this other dimension around racial equity and justice that, that you've lifted up as a board that you would like. And so if you want to comment on both at the same time, feel free to do that. At the end, we'll, we'll pull out again and we'll ask, well, what are the roles for First Five? Just like we did with the last conversation in light of the strategy. Really important, again, the strategies are a means to achieve a goal, right? So in this visual, we've got the goals on the right hand side. We've already said that community engagement, there's a lot of interest around that. Any other kinds of strategies that you think can get us there? Any other kinds of strategies? Commissioner McCroskey?
Well, I seem to have a lot to say about this helping today, but I'm going to take advantage of it. One of the things I want you to help me think about is the fact that we, at the beginning, talked about these change initiatives that are going on in system. And I'm not feeling that we've got full alignment in terms of where the opportunities given those. So I don't know whether that's like in tactics or later, but just because I'm involved in some of them, I, I have a sense of where some of the pilot projects that are already being planned are already underway, for example, might be of great interest to First Five. And so like, how do we align the, the funding opportunities for new prevention approaches with our sort of thinking about strategies?
So, Ophelia, I just heard a couple of things. So like aligning the funding opportunities with the strategies is going to be really important in order to harness these opportunities, right? My thought is, can we stay on one of those opportunities? Just talk through one and then maybe collectively see how we can connect it. Here's what I'm hearing is your concern that given that there's these initiatives that you mentioned, whether that's the FFPSA or the CalAim or all these things that are happening, if we miss the boat, right? How are we going to make sure that there's a connection? That's what I'm getting there. So I'm wondering if you could talk through one of those and then maybe together figure out, well, how do we make sure that there's a, that a strategy or a tactic is going to harness that?
As part of the FFPS, the community-wide planning for prevention, there is what we're calling the community pathway, which is primary prevention of and in particular, focus on children not coming into the system, or if they do come into the system, providing all that additional array of support in their.
So that's already happening, right?
That's already happening. The law was passed, the state, our L.A. County Plan was approved of an allocation of block grand dollars for pilot projects. They're already, the first set are already starting. And, and they include things like partnership with school districts to, to assure that families with very young children can make an easy connection to home visiting. That one is one where First Five is already very much involved. But there are others where, for example, we're saying of all the families who are receiving subsidized childcare in a particular part of the county, how many would also be interested in home visiting? And how does that overlap with the Help Me Grow work that's in the analog valley? I'm just saying there's opportunities that I can think of because I, I know some of those details that I feel like we're not. So there aren't any indicators at all, for example, about preventing child abuse yet.
Okay. So one way is we can elevate as an indicator something that connects with those initiatives. That would be a critical decision, right? Because if we don't have an indicator that's tied to the particular initiative, then in some ways, there's disconnect already there. So we're going to have to really brush through and comb through the indicators to see which ones are really connected to those key initiatives. The other thing that really stands out to me in what you said is that maybe here, we already have some initiatives that you brought up. But maybe we need to have an explicit list of initiatives that you know about. Like you mentioned MHSA today. And then the other one about the Measure J, right? So maybe the board and others, we can really identify what are those core initiatives that you feel like are a must, right? Because I think that is going to also help us align it to the indicator. Because I think that's where we have great potential or greater potential to then impact that change, right? So those things are coming up in my mind, based on this quick conversation that we're having on this one. How do those sound? At least as two, two steps that we can take. Okay. Anything else? What other strategies? How can we achieve this?
I'm just looking at where it says, I think, allowing the parents to tell us what they need. I think another part of that can be allowing families to tell us what they know and building on the knowledge that's already there in the community, which is sort of the basis of like centering as a form of prenatal care and other models that are being used for like centering diabetes. It centers the, the patient and what they already know and the shared wisdom in the community. And that may be more of an incentive to draw people in not just access the services, but to also help us know how we can improve the services.
So as part of our strategy, we really do need to have a clear way of centering the, the family and tapping into their knowledge, their funds of knowledge, so that they can tell us how certain things should, should work.
Yes.
Yeah. And so that should be a key component of any kind of community engagement strategy. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that community. And I think this whole idea of the community needs to be like a portal that a family or a mother or father can walk through and say, as they go into it, I know when I enter this room that I'm going to have my questions are going to be answered, that I'm going to have access to services, that individuals are going to treat me with respect and not expect me to figure out, you know, here's the list, you go figure it out, but they're actually going to help me find that. And I think you engage, one of the strategies that I would love to see is giving a young family, we were just talking about this, a, a respite care place to bring their children, where you actually are including them in being part of the solution, but also providing them with a break from a two-year-old or a three-year-old. But begin to demonstrate very quickly that we care about this community and I, and we want to get, get rid of isolation. And that, I mean, I think that personally, I think you have to do something. We have to begin to deliver a service of some kind into the community. And that can be with a community-based organizations, but, but see what they bring to the table and see what they're willing to give in that room. Once that person's come through the door, that you say, yes, yes, I can help you with that. I mean, they're, we're working, I mean, I work around the county separate from this about like, well, how do we take care of? How do we deliver things to them? Where do I get that blankety-blank refrigerator for that family? You know, how do I make sure they have beds for the kids? There are a lot of places to go for that. But a lot, but many community-based organizations don't know the other person exists. Don't know that if you go into a community to do a, a, a community needs, that you could call me and say, hey, Astrid, do you know where there's somebody who would do X, Y, or Z for this, for a family that I was brought to my attention? You begin to build a credibility rather than being words. And I'm really, really interested in how we, as an agency, begin to help people get the, get the stuff they need.
I'm picking up on two things. One is a very concrete recommendation on respite care, especially for those who have two-year-olds. And I have lots of nephews and nieces that have two-year-olds. So that's one. But the other thing I'm picking up on, which I think is a little bit deeper, is that at the community level, being able to have portals, I think you mentioned, that are portals into integrated culturally competent concrete support. Right? So if we can envision a strategy that enable, that lands those kinds of, that creates those portals in our community to access that high-quality service and support. Yeah.
Right. And asking the, the people with research that have unique skillset within that community to help deliver that back to the community, whether they are a community-based organization or just a community member. That, you know, you have a ex basketball, professional basketball player, or maybe that's a bad choice. You know, an athlete that led and they say, can you come into this community and begin to do after-school athletics for kids? That you, you look at the skillsets and, and, and begin to, and begin to build this community.
So we draw on the assets of our community and actually fund people in our community to deliver some of those services will be critical. All right. All right. Any other ideas? Can I say if you're, if you're speaking to the mic real quick just so that?
Yeah. So I think that sharing of data would be extremely important because it would streamline the process. So maybe something like that where community organizations were linked to each other. And so we could follow the individual. And again, it would give us the data we're looking for as well.
So investing in a, a data, I'm going to use a term like a data infrastructure that that the county and other formal organizations can also use in conjunction with community-based organizations.
Referrals and then support and then also follow-up.
Okay, that that could be a really critical strategy. And and how would that help?
Well, I think first of all, we can, if we don't see the follow-up themselves, we can, you know, figure out if they need more support within the community, community workers, whatever agency was the last we went through. If if they're sending them to a referral, is it referral? What, where's the problem there? So I think it's good in problem solving and also in looking at, you know, we are wanting to have data. Is this effective? So we need to see where the problems are in terms of the community agencies and our regular systems that are, where's the links working and where are they not?
Yeah. Okay. And I, I'm trying to tie some of those to some of the goals, right? Because in the end, they have to tie into some of the goals. So this idea of data sharing and data infrastructure and capacity.
Would be probably goal number two.
Definitely would be number two and possibly even goal number one, right? Because we can then make sure that families that need to have their basic needs met, right? We're, we're able to connect them, right? And then also with with goal number two around bringing in community assets and folks within our community, those build relationships. Right? So that's, I think, a strategy that can support at least two goals there, right? I see that.
To continue with the portal discussion, there, there are a couple of companies out there, maybe assess landscape. There are a couple of companies out there that already have platforms where people can log on and they can, they can identify the type of service that they need. There are a bunch out there, but there are, I think, a few that really have done a good job of reaching out to extensive communities. And so they, they have that ability already for us as laypeople to go on there and to search for what we need. And I think there's at least one that actually will send referrals in Spanish for for those that that speak Spanish. So in terms of resources, maybe that's something that we can look into is are there other? You know, it's the digital divide. Are there, are there ways for us to connect our community families with some of these platforms, electronic platforms? So that what we can't provide today, we know it's out there already, at least a lot of it is, maybe, maybe we can sort of do a little more research on that.
Yeah. To tap into those existing platforms that are already connecting communities and see how to align with that. So that information and connection can happen more effectively. Yeah. And so doing like a landscape of who's doing that out in the community.
And then maybe to take a step further, there are households that don't have your iPad, your computer. So is there a way, can we leverage some funding maybe to to support, when working with others to support providing those to our families?
And that, does that get at the digital divide that you mentioned earlier?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Yeah. Did you get that? Both the device and the internet service and connection, right? All right. Anything else that comes to mind?
Can I just speak to the idea of data? I love data when I'm doing research or whether I have to write a report or whether I'm writing a grant. But actually, I'm, I'm, the people that I deal with don't know about data. They do know about food, refrigerators, daycare, transportation, and activities for their kids after school. So I think there has to be a duality in a strategy here where we, we do talk about, we'd like to know what the data is on the families. But we'd also like to come in and make sure that 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 portal links them with the things they need. And Frank, speaking of what you're talking about, is there, there are, I can give you the names of of organizations that we should link to. And, you know, we're working on putting together a, a clearinghouse of information that probably, I want to have them have a Yelp with it as well. So that you actually figure out who actually does respond. And that, so that families, when you ask them what they need, that there's an answer and it's not a list. You know, that there's actually action. And that way, I think
Live, active and responsive network.
Right. They can provide current capacity because sometimes there's, there's a waiting list at times. So address that as well. And then what can, what can we as a collective do to help support that? And then going back to data, maybe we can find out via that platform, because we don't have to do it all. Where are the gaps, right? Where are the gaps in LA County?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can I, let me move us to racial equity and racial justice. And I, I think this last part is a good segue. So from a results-based accountability standpoint, and also following the work of the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, we tend to define racial equity and racial justice in this way. So racial justice is about the outcome, right? It's that condition of well-being that we want for everyone, regardless of the racial category that we're slotted into, right? Racial equity is about how we get there, right? It's about the means by which we get there. One way that I know we tend to do is we tend to disaggregate data, right? So talking about data, so we look at data. We look, we disaggregate it by race and ethnicity and by other factors as well, language and things like that. We look at, based on the outcomes that the data reveals, right? We look at disparities or disproportionality. And then that gets us thinking about, well, then what are the equity strategies that we would need to implement to make sure that those who are most impacted by a certain area get the supports they need, right? And those supports may be the same or different, usually different and very targeted, right? So that's typically how we end up thinking about racial equity. Starts with the data, figuring out what those disproportionality are. And then we start thinking about what are the factors that are leading to these disproportionate outcomes? And then how do we intervene, right? Is this making sense so far? Okay. So in light of that setup, my question is, so we've got some strategies here. What would make these strategies? How do we make sure that they have a racial equity lens in mind? Or what can we do to make sure that that happens? Because one of the things that can happen is, and this is one of the things we noticed with more broadly colorblind racism, is that we erase those differences, right? We want to name the differences and then address those, that's the shift we're trying to make. Any thoughts on this question?
Well, I, other than all moving to Norway, where we don't have any history of, of that at all, and everybody's equal and has equal access to everything.
That's another hypothetical.
But we can't do that, but you can't afford to live there. Other than that, I think I would like to, to acknowledge the trauma associated with having, with being a minority in this country. Acknowledge it as a real trauma and then begin to find, deliver solutions that are real. In other words, I, I mean, I, I, I don't want to go into details here because I could go on for six hours. But the idea that we actually acknowledge that that we end up putting African-American kids in jail at a disproportional rate to any of anybody else in this country. And why is that? And then how do we address that before they trip and fall and find themselves in DCFS or in Central Jewell Hall or in, and ultimately in adult prisons? But begin to look at that at zero to three, zero to two. Begin to look at ways to deliver a, a preventive system at that level. Knowledge that they are at highest risk, like as if they had a certain, you know, propensity for inborn error or metabolism. And that inborn error is a culture that we have in this country. And that we then seek ways to solve that in a very consistent, creative, giving way that we actually deliver a service, that we teach parents how to be parents, that we give the kids a place where they go four or five days a week, even as a little kid, where they're loved and nurtured and taken care of, and they learn something different. And and I, I mean, I think that's, that's the only way that I see out of the despair that I feel from the teenagers that I see that have been raised with a sense of, of them being not part of our culture and not part of our society. And they're outsiders, and I'd like to bring them in in a real way. In a real way. And I think that's, that goes with the, we can begin to look at outcomes from that, recommending that, doing some pilots. And it'll, it'll spread like wildfire if we do it, because it'll be successful. I mean, when, when I started doing this a long, long time ago, and I thought I would do a control study to look at groups of kids that didn't have the multidisciplinary approach with DCFS in the clinic and follow-up and services and everything else that went with it. And then I would take a group over here that we didn't give that to. So we had the comparison groups. Within six months, you saw a difference and you couldn't do it anymore. Ethically and morally, you just couldn't not, you couldn't, you couldn't, you had to give the services to everybody. And I think that's what we would see. But I think we have to, we have to, to be, be lobbyists for that.
Thank you for getting us started in this conversation. So what do others think? So instead of me reframing or framing this just here, what others think? And then we'll figure out something together.
I think one way is through the lens that we do this work. It's sometimes when you look at the reality of conditions of people of color, marginalized people in this country, it's easy to see the trauma. It's easy to take into consideration the history of violence and oppression. But sometimes you miss that there are. It takes on a more deficit-based approach as opposed to an asset-based approach. Because there's a duality. I, just speaking for myself, I grew up in Watts. And when people hear that, they immediately, depending on the community they're from, feel sorry for me. But there's no need because I enjoyed my life in Watts. We were food insecure. There were many of us living in a home, but I had a very good upbringing. And sometimes the work that's done is presented in a, in a form of charity as opposed to correcting the wrongs and making sure that people are being elevated to their rightful place in this country as opposed to just being given a handout out of guilt or out of a way of, you know, wanting to show that, you know, we, we care about you, we're here for you. And and no one wants to feel like they're a charity case. And a lot of times when people go into communities in education, there, you know, we've changed the language from at risk to at promise. Because a child who is labeled at risk automatically knows that people are looking at everything they're showing up without and none of what they're showing up with. And so I, I, I don't know if this is necessarily a strategy or just, just a lens that we can do this work through.
And that's what I'm asking for is reflection, not necessarily a study, but these are the reflections we want here.
I couldn't agree more. And I think what she's saying is what I've been thinking in terms of community engagement. We have to be strategic in de-stigmatizing access to services, because I think there is particularly for communities of color, right? It's you need services instead of building on the resilience, it's building on the, the weak, the so-called weakness, right? And so making sure that we did de-stigmatize accessing services in true prevention form, we're preventing any kind of problem. We're helping build the resilience. We're building on the strengths instead of the weaknesses. And I think we need to be strategic in how we do that, if you're going to be reaching out to communities of color.
What comes to mind in, to you, to you when you think about being strategic about doing that with communities of color?
I think a lot of communities of color don't always access services for that reason. Because if you access services, it's, it's playing into the weakness, right? The perceived weakness, and that's, I think, what we want to avoid.
Right. I think
Be proactive, right? By, by reaching out for services, but, but we have to change that narrative.
Right.
And I think by asking them, how can we help you? And letting them guide that, that, that narrative, I think is, I think it's important.
Can I?
Let me, can we go to Commissioner Martinez? Because I don't want her to be left out there.
I was just, I was just going to give an example of that when we provide free meals to everyone.
Right.
Which we just started doing. Then that starts, you know, we just started. I can't believe it after all these years, but I mean, then it takes, it, it'll take a few years to get in the habit of it and the whole stigmatization or de-stigmatization will start fading away. So I think just like going to therapy or whatever, we, if we provide mental health services for everyone, then it takes away the stigma of, oh, only you need to go to therapy or whatever it is. Everyone does. So I think this is really important. And this is the beginning of breaking down some of these old ways of, of doing business. And we'll, we'll, we'll see results.
Yeah. So Commissioner Martinez, it strikes me that if the free meals is a universal approach, then folks don't have to distinguish themselves, right?
Right. Everybody knows when you're a kid, you, you know, we know who got the free meals and who didn't.
Maybe that's an approach that can help de-stigmatize. How about others?
I was just going to say that as we talk about the, everyone is impacted. When we think about the trauma associated with white supremacist ideology, I, you know, my team and I read an amazing book, Grandma's Hands, I can't think of the author, that basically, you know, suggested that everyone is impacted and traumatized by white supremacist ideology. White people equal to people of color. And so, you know, I think if we, if we're going to talk trauma, we should really understand the trauma that is inflicted on everybody and, and start the frame from there.
We start the frame from showing that the trauma is not just on people of color, but on white folks as well through a particular way of seeing and experiencing the world.
Exactly. Exactly.
That's also potentially a way of starting to de-stigmatize the very concept of trauma.
Precisely.
Yeah.
Or at least broadening it.
Broadening it.
Mm-hmm.
How about folks who haven't, the shared, you want to go for it, then we'll
I'm sorry. I'll fall back.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts on, on this side of the room? All right.
Well, I was just going to piggyback off of what the supervisor said, because racism and capitalism are two sides of the same coin. And so the more we look at the landscape of our country, it's not just people of color. Like, black folks happen to be at the bottom of pretty much every indicator. But you have white people who are there as well. You have people who, and we were having a conversation earlier that immigrants of color who come to this country, the first five years, they may enjoy some level of like autonomy, independence, agency, but then they, they start to experience those same levels of racism and discrimination. And so it's affecting us all and it's, it matters when we talk about just the workforce and having a living wage that affects everyone. But that's also a form of white supremacy culture that is impacting more than just people of color.
So I'm getting, if we take a more asset orientation as opposed to deficit, we looked at, we, we don't take a charity approach, but more of a corrective action approach around how systems function that we we not do this out of guilt and handouts, but rather around really uplifting and supporting the whole community. Language shifts from at risk to at promise would help. Universalizing services and support so that folks don't have to classify themselves as in need, right? And, and expanding and broadening some of these concepts like trauma, so that we can see how all of us are impacted, right? And anything else that can guide us in the right direction? So that as we're implementing these strategies, we are not, again, reproducing these hierarchies, but rather dismantling them. Is that good? All right. So let's just open it up for this final comments. We've gone through a conversation on goals and indicator strategies on racial equity. How about the role for first five LA? So maybe to stop there, like, so in light of this conversation, anything else that you want to share around what would be a good, effective role for first five LA in terms of moving these strategies forward? Taking this racial equity approach, goals and indicators? Any other thoughts?
I'd like to see an equal, I agree with you, equal distribution of services across the board. I think in my practice, it's, it's, it's everyone that ends up. And actually, to be completely candid, it is often the very poor and the very rich. Those children are not happy in environments, because there is a, you know, there's a somebody holding down three jobs at one end, and there's somebody holding down three social events at the other end. And the kids are the ones that, that get lost in the middle. So I mean, I'm talking about services across the board. across the board for everyone that, that we ask that we're investing in the kids, but also oftentimes we talk about keeping kids and families and helping the families achieve status. It is the poor family that needs to be asked, how can I help you? And that we then can really respond to that. Regardless of their race or whatever, it's just that nobody's asked them that. They expect them to pull themselves up by boots that we never gave them. And that's, it's the boots that I'm saying we have to be able to deliver as well.
Commissioner Tilton.
Well, there's been a lot of really rich discussion here today. And I think my, my comment is it needs to be out there. Our message needs to be out there. Um, in our discussions with staff, it was very clear that none of us believes that our constituencies understand what five, first five is doing. Um, it's seen as a funder, of course, but, um, can we maybe start thinking creatively about how we get the message out about all the, all of these issues and where we're going and what we wanna hear back and how can we be better at it? Listening to the community, talking with the community, but also among ourselves and, and it's, it's this whole issue of communication that I keep bringing up, that it's very amazing how much effort we put into trying to improve the lives of, um, children prenatally to five in the families. And, and it's not recognized. Frankly, I think the state first five, when they put out their PSAs, people are paying attention to those, this whole toxic, this whole toxic loss of children being around violence, for example, I guess their latest one. And people will say, oh, you're on that commission that has those wonderful PSAs, but that's not us at all. So I would really like, I would really like to start thinking creatively about how we and I would like to have it to take, cause I have a very large concern. Um, private, public, I mean, and I don't have that package. I don't have that package easily accessible to me. And I'm ashamed of that. I've been on this commission longer than anybody. I'm the older commissioner here. And I still have a problem explaining.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Martinez dropped off and per AB 2449, we have to hold the meeting until she's back on.
Okay.
Oh, she's back. Thank you so much. My apologies, Commissioner Tilton, you may proceed.
So the communication piece is really critical for you.
I think that's it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I really would like think about how we do that and, um, and take all of this rich discussion and, and jewels of information and insights, uh, out to a larger community. And maybe we do PSA's, I don't know. Maybe, maybe we have, you know, more, um, more media connected to us. So just my thought.
And right before Commissioner, uh, Tilton, you made the comment. Edie, Passamia, and Nelson said, and this is about our communication plan. And so I think, um, it needs to be top of mind for us once we finalize our document and we're clear what our it is that, that every commissioner should feel completely comfortable, particularly since all of us have been engaged in building it. That even through muscle memory, we'll be able to pull it out in terms of, of where we land, because we've all been actively engaged in building it. So you, you have my commitment to share to make sure you are gonna have a communication plan. Thank you.
We're pretty much towards the very end of this. I wanted to see if, uh, Carla or Commissioner Mitchell, if you wanted to share any kind of reflections based on the, cause you just did right now as the, as the chair, right? So any reflections that you'd like to share on what you're hearing? Um, that you think really stands out for you?
Yes, in looking at, so, uh, first and foremost, uh, the goals, uh, and indicators really clearly, there's a lot more work on the indicators. So I wanna make that really explicit. It's been named, thank you, Regal. And then, um, for the strategies, um, seeing themes on community engagement, and we're really, really thrilled about that. We have monthly staff meetings and have, uh, internal work group doing a lot of the thinking that you hear here. Um, and community engagement is something that the whole first five LA team in their wisdom has called out very clearly as an important strategy moving forward. And the alignment here with the board is really, really exciting. Um, the second thing, uh, we're hearing is this continued elevation of systems change navigation, um, within systems and hearing that really deeply and clearly. Um, and then this communications, uh, strategy plan is something that our communications team sitting back there has named several times about wanting to make sure to get this information to the board, um, and having this sort of insight and clarity that you all are giving is really helpful for that. So just really thrilled at the alignment with the team, um, internally and many of the things that you all are lifting up.
I would just add that, that, um, I, I guess we shouldn't be surprised, given, um, how and why all of us got on this commission in the first place, that there would be so many common through lines that you're hearing woven through our comments. Um, I, I hope you're feeling it based on your, the one-on-one conversations you had. So I think, um, and if you would, I asked you that yesterday, but help me again. Or I don't know if it's more appropriate for Carla, just to walk us all through. We're clear where we are today. What are the next steps? Cause I want people to, throughout the process, understand where we're gonna get to and where we are in the process. So everyone is confident in terms of what comes next to the commission, that whole piece. Who is that?
I'll highlight two next steps, one very short, short term, and then one over the course of this month. Remember, we only really have one month at most to bring this to closure because by October 11th, I believe, uh, when you meet again, we have to put something before you. So first step is next week, we have that conver, do have those two conversations with, uh, on community engagement. So just know that that's, as part of that, over the next two weeks, we are consulting with different thought partners and yourselves included. Going back to Commissioner McCroskey's point, like if you wanna contact us, because you really wanna discuss indicators and so forth, feel free to reach out to me, uh, and we'll work with you. So again, step one is bringing closure to the, uh, indicators conversation over the next week or two. Um, the, the next, uh, second step is, um, to start developing the strategies. So this conversation that we started with the strategies, we wanna also hold those over the next, uh, two weeks. Uh, with that, we'll come back to you, uh, for your October session with goals, opportunities and the goals, objectives and strategies. So expect that for your October meeting. After that, after the, uh, you'll, in November 9th, when you meet again?
In November 9th.
November 9th. I'm getting those. muscle memory, yay. That's when you're gonna vote on the goals, um, objectives and strategies. When that is done, then we're gonna shift over to very tactical conversations and we'll let you know more about that. And that's where we're gonna get into the granular level of data with, around strategies and things like that. So I hope that is making sense.
That, that was helpful. And, and I know, um, we have new, uh, commissioners that will be joining us representing SD three, um, and, and even I know my SD two alternate is in the audience, just to make sure that even commission alternates have an opportunity to provide feedback in some kind of way. Uh, just to make sure that everyone feels a sense of ownership. Um, and so I don't know how we plan to kind of onboard the SD three appointees, since they're kind of coming in midstream, but I, I, I'd ask that we give that some thought. Just so they can get caught up and feel like, say, too, can their voice can be heard.
Yes, uh, uh, I'll offer for the folks here, um, and alternates, um, they, uh, Regal and Chrissy have reached out to um, so thank you for the offer. Anything related to goals, um, objectives, indicators, Regal's the person to go to. We are, uh, we also have the pleasure of working, uh, with Nancy Stroll. Um, Nancy Stroll has worked, uh, at the state, uh, worked with our chair, um, and Nancy will be reaching out to all commissioners, um, to make sure that the strategies, um, and uh, potential ideas for tactics are heard from all of you. So there will be really deep, um, uh, gathering of, uh, additional information from you all. And then I, I really wanna call out the first five LA staff, um, all this thinking and what you're hearing is really based on the foundation that a lot of the team here has done already. So we have, um, to your almost, we've engaged staff in internal, um, staff meetings so that when you hear some of this, it, it is that wisdom and insight that's coming. Um, so a, a lot of places for additional, uh, input, um, and then some conversations with you all with our, uh, team of consultants helping us.
And that is 3:50 on time, so.
Hey, fabulous, fabulous. Regal, thank you very much for leading us through that process.
I never had this amount of time with the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Um, 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 are we gonna have to take public comment on, uh, agenda item six?
Um, we're gonna wait for part B and so that we can group it as item six.
Perfect. And so let's move into part B, the sustainability framework. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, appreciate the rich conversations and the good discussions. Regal, for, for everything that you've done for this, uh, this, uh, board meeting for today. So now that we've talked about the goals and the indicators that'll inform our objectives, now we're, I acknowledge that we're slowly becoming laser focused in terms of what we'll do for the children and families of LA County. Now, one of the biggest challenges, again, to achieve this mission is our accelerated fiscal reality. So earlier this year, we presented the impact of our fiscal reality from Prop 31. So how are we addressing this challenge? So today we'll provide a short presentation about the sustainability overview, which will provide some of our initial thinking on how we're gonna address this challenge. This overview will present two items, a definition of sustainability, um, that word has come up and even the prior discussions uh, talked in a couple of minutes ago. Um, and the other one is a, a framework for, for this to help us, um, narrow in and show what efforts we're doing to address our fiscal reality. Uh, this work has been put together, um, by a cross-functional work group. Uh, now that work group is beyond Raul and I. So it included policy, it included program folks, uh, operations and program center support. So quick thank you to, uh, Deanna, Kar, uh, Kariaga, Ophelia Medina, Anna Porter, and Tamisha Williams. And I wanna thank them in advance because this work is not over. For that. So let's, let's get into this. On slide two, this is our definition of sustainability. And the reason why we started with this, because even discussing internally, there was a lot of uh, interpretation of what that is. Uh, we use that word a lot. So, um, what we landed on with this team, sharing first five LA can achieve long-lasting impact, stability and flexibility toward our mission that I mentioned earlier. All right. Uh, the initial thinking here is to really to keep things simple and to allow us to really think creatively because some sustainability's that we don't know today may come up later. And, um, how we approach, uh, sustainability in general. So as you will see later in the framework, there are areas that we are sure about. And also there and also there are areas that we, uh, that are in development. So let me repeat that in the sustainability framework, there are areas that we are sure about, and there are still areas that are in development. So here is our sustainability framework, and I will start from the top. Where we are being explicit here that our efforts that we do below in the sustainability efforts are tied or within first five LA's role. I know we just discussed early with Regal about what our role is. So once we land on that role, the efforts that we do should align to the role that we eventually land on for, for that. So within that, there are two areas within this framework that will help us with our sustainability. One is maximizing our assets or what we already have. Now there are efforts that we do now, uh, as you can see in the bottom left over there in the operations. And there are, um, efforts that are evolving, as I said earlier, are in development. Um, like this investment strategy, which will go a little bit more in detail. On the other side, we do have alternative revenue. And under that, we talk about policy advocacy. Uh, this new area of business models of how we perhaps could address or assess what different business models we can do to get, um, additional revenue. And then finally, uh, what we're coining this term is collective impact. In other words, partnering with other organizations to pool our funding. And I do wanna make it clear that, um, I know I'm talking about alternative revenues. But it's necessarily not only money coming in to first five LA. But it's also, uh, implying that, um, it's money, how we can le, uh, rely less on Prop 10 revenue for, for that, in the case of what I described in, uh, collective impact for, for that. All right. So we'll go a little bit more in detail with this. So I will turn it over to my colleague here, Raul, to get into each of these. First is maximizing assets.
Thank you, JR. Um, so to achieve our long-lasting stability and flexibility towards our mission, we need to start to look internally at our current assets and how we maximize our fiscal and fixed assets and our talent, meaning our people. So starting with our fixed assets, such as our building and our technology, we need to think about strategies that can bring additional revenues and or dollars to offset our costs. One of those greatest opportunities is to think on how we use our facilities, this building as a revenue generating opportunity. We do see with the square footage of this organization, this building that we're sitting in, there are great opportunities to leverage additional revenue. And if not increasing our revenues, is helping our partners, community partners, community-based organizations, and offsetting some of their costs so that inherently it may offset some of our costs. So that is one great opportunity that we have as we look at some of our assets. Such as our building. Another opportunity is really maximizing and utilizing our existing systems. We acquire systems like our financial edge Blackbaud system that has many different attributes. And sometimes we just get so focused on how we're using it at the current opportunity that we're implementing these systems. But we don't really think about, how do we revise or rethink about how we use these systems to better leverage and really take advantage of the full capabilities that these systems, um, offer us. And then there's also our talent management, our people. Making sure that we're maximizing, maximizing our talent staff by putting them in the right place within the organization and also taking advantage of their smarts. And we will be talking about that as we look into, uh, revenue opportunities, um, later on in our slide deck. Um, and then the, uh, last, um, and most importantly is how we maximize our current fund balance, our fiscal resources. By, um, thinking about different investments. But before we go into our visit, uh, different investments, I also wanna talk about, um, how we look at our operating. On an annual basis, we incur many different costs, from health insurance to how we look at our benefit packages, to our salaries, to just basic operating, um, expenditures. There are great opportunities and we in our organization, we're always looking at what are our opportunities to most efficient reduce our overhead cost by always negotiating our healthcare, always looking at our retirement plan and just really being more strategic about the expenses that we incur. And then moving to our, um, other fiscal resources is our fund balance, which is our cash on hand. Historically, our organization has invested our resources in the general pool. We have almost doubled our return by specifically working with the Treasury's office and looking on how we can specifically invest our fund balance. So be, between this great partnership, we have increased our overhead rate of return on our cash because of that partnership. And that's a great opportunity on how we can maximize our current assets. Now moving on to how we think about investment strategies. Moving to investment strategies, on this slide, what we are trying to emphasize is to shift and promote a diligent approach to how we is to shift and promote a diligent approach to how we prioritize and how we use our resources by adopting a return on investment mindset. We realize that this is work that we need to do, and it's not only just a traditional return on investment, meaning a dollar spent in a specific investment or work today here offsets resources or costs in different systems down the line, years down the line. We're not just looking at traditional fiscal return on investment, but we're also wanting to look at, uh, return on investment through the lens of impact. Making sure that we are, when we invest in certain opportunities that we're looking at, this dollar is making this type of impact. And we feel like it's very important that this organization really starts adopting a mindset that really anchors on return on investment so that as we monitor our success and we monitor our program, we can also be prioritizing where we invest our precious resources.
Yeah, thanks, Raul. Uh, so we just covered part of the sustainability framework under maximizing assets. So now we are going into now the alternative revenue strategy portion. Before we get into that alternative revenue, uh, portion, um, we know that there are revenue opportunities, uh, that are ahead of us. So which ones are the right opportunities for first five LA? Uh, for example, could there be policies, um, that we could advocate for? Are there different business models that we should consider? The bottom line is, um, are there opportunities that align with our mission for first five LA? So as we progress with this, uh, we will develop a criteria to help us identify and assess some of these opportunities to help our decision-making. So that, um, alternative revenue criteria, um, is in development. And a sample of that, uh, you can see in appendix. But what you should get out of this is that criteria will help us, uh, make decisions on, again, what opportunities better align with first five LA. So I'll turn it over with Raul.
So we begin with, um, the strategy around our policy and advocacy work. We need to acknowledge that our policy work has been one of first five LA's greatest strengths for securing and promoting alternative revenues for improving child well-being and development. We have proven to be successful at the local, state and federal level, and we will continue to lead and support opportunities that advances our work and the field through our policy and advocacy work. In addition to leading and supporting those opportunities, we are also wanting to proactively be monitoring to ensure that all resources that have been secured are being fully utilized and not returned. A perfect example is the conversations that we were having earlier around M H S A. Um, so a perfect example is the recent collaboration between, uh, the First Five Association, First Five LA, and other children advocacy group that secured that a portion of M H S A dollars still focuses on children and the youth population. And as mentioned, there's other opportunities where we have done that good work. Now moving on to a different strategy for alternative revenue is to explore our business model and how we can expand and take advantage of our current infrastructure. And again, as I mentioned earlier, our people, the talent that we have within the organization and the infrastructure that we have within the organization. We proactively want to explore opportunities to expand our role as a fiscal intermediary that aligns to first five LA's role, expands and leverages funding to support our work and advances our goal and outcomes, and most importantly, to offset our administrative cost. We have been doing this for many years with First Five California and through many of the partnerships with county departments where we have played, um, the mediator. Uh, we also believe within the organization, we carry a lot of expertise that may lend to reimbursable opportunities to help different entities' capacity and support coalition, coalition involvement. Uh, which leads me to the next strategy, uh, which is our last strategy, but I would believe it's the most important one, is collective impact. The reality is that we can't do this work by ourselves. By creating partnerships to pool funding to have a greater collective impact, we, it will be critical to how we advance our goals and our outcomes. And we must always be exploring those new opportunities at all levels, including at the philanthropic level, all the way up to the county department, who many of them share a common goal to advance our child well-being. Now to move to the different strategies at work. So this slide represents current work that's currently underway of the different strategies at place between our policy advocacy work, our business model, and collective impact. As you see, these are all, uh, strategies that are currently, uh, being under utilization through our Medi-Cal efforts, our work with Family First Prevention Service Act, uh, the work that we're doing currently with DMH, and of course, uh, the Children and Youth Behavior Health Initiative. Now for next steps, JR?
Yeah, thanks, Raul. So that is our presentation. In terms of next steps, as I mentioned earlier, there are areas that we are sure about, and there are areas that are in development. All right, the one area that we are sure about, about is, uh, maximizing our assets within operations. As Raul mentioned earlier, specifically our building, our staff, technology and our fund balance. So we'll proceed with that. Further development, uh, in terms of our next steps is further development in our criteria to inform our decision, which I alluded to earlier regarding the sample that can be found in appendix. Again, that will help us, uh, make decisions when opportunity arise, whether or not it aligns with our mission, uh, for first five LA. And finally, the last two is really working on and developing approaches around seeking alternative revenue as well as further developing what Raul mentioned, a return on investment approach to our work. So this concludes our presentation and we'll now open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions of Commissioners? Mr. McBride, she's not gonna leave you hanging, yeah.
And I'm gonna ask this under the understanding that there are no silly questions.
Never.
With the investments, are there risks involved and what are those risks?
With the way we're investing our current fund balance?
Yes.
So because we are a government entity, there are requirements on how we can use our resources. So it's just as secured as being our, investing in the general pool. The only difference between the general pool is being outside of the general pool is that we can target our investments. So I can see a menu of where there's a higher yielding and I can move our money under those different opportunities.
Okay.
Instead of just the county treasurer's office monitoring their best on a weekly to monthly basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just to add to that, that menu is a very restricted menu. It's not anything that you can buy, so it is, uh, under, um, a strict menu of what you can choose.
I don't, I don't have the power to just say, hey, let's put all our money in Microsoft or something like that.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, Commissioner?
Um, I'm just really pleased with how well this is aligning with the discussion that we just had. Just fabulous. But i- in particular for me seeing you give some specific examples, uh, alignment with the M H S A, you know, the, the to the current day, but as sort of how do we follow it up? Um, the, the work that you've already done around F F P S A, but how do we follow it? And I'm sure that's coming in, in that all those opportunities aren't ripe, but it, it does feel like there's some mapping to your current areas of expertise. Cause I absolutely agree with you. You have a fabulous resource in your staff. Uh, and they have a lot of very broad and very deep expertise and sort of trying to understand how that, um, could maximize potential for really, uh, using that expertise to, to a lot of people's benefit, not just to first five.
Yeah, I think that's what's so exciting about this work is because we're starting with the framework and our next phase is that implementation. So really think, really start thinking about taking an inventory, like especially when it comes to our staff and analyzing and seeing the expertise, because there there's a lot of expertise and a lot of smart people within our organization. And other organizations have reached out to us for some of our staff's expertise. And it's just a great opportunity. It's, it, it may not bring in a lot of revenue, um, but it would definitely be an opportunity to build strong partnerships for, so that in the future it creates great partnerships, strong partnerships, which then inherently will reduce our costs.
Um, I recently had a meeting from the Kemp Center in Denver. They, cause they're going bankrupt, uh, in their child abuse, in the child abuse world. And, and the question came up is how do you sustain yourself from an economic standpoint in, you know, in today's economy, et cetera. And, and I think it has to do with what is the product that you, you bring to the, I mean, speaking from a business standpoint that you bring to the table. I mean, I'll just throw this out because this is safe environment to throw those ideas out there and, and you can comment on how dumb it is. Um, is I think one of the great advantages that first five has would be to coordinate and act as editors and managers for a couple of products. Uh, one being, um, individuals and agencies and CBOs who are writing grants uh, for the zero to five age. And that they would act as, you know, editor data, helping researchers in, and for a percentage of, of, uh, of the grant so that you're not looking just for grants. Cause a lot of people see first five as very rich and, and not needing a grant, say if you went to a foundation and asked for. So they add to you that you would be in the intermediary and maybe manage that, uh, because you have so many smart people working in this building, that I think that could be, uh, uh, very helpful. I think the other, uh, the other product that, that first five could, could, uh, run and, and sell as a, as something that you do is, is, uh, license, licensing and helping people set up therapeutic daycares and, and, uh, respite cares. Uh, a lot of which is, is a tremendously difficult thing for many people to figure out, but could help you with your community-based, you know, the earlier part of today, a community-based, a response to high-needs, um, communities in, in, in LA County. Just a thought, I mean, it's the idea, we're kind of a natural to move in that direction. And a lot of people, you know, I mean, I get people asking me to edit what they're writing. And I, I, it would be great to think about, maybe that's part of what we do here is we're facilitators, editors and managers for, for a certain percentage of what, what the grants were. Just a thought.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I, I appreciate what you brought forward and your out-of-the-box thinking in terms of, um, recognizing that you all are asset, first five LA is an asset. And I just had a flashback when you talked about the space, uh, in a previous life when I led a R and R agency, um, and we ended up subletting, uh, a floor to, to DCFS over in Water Ridge. And just, it was interesting, just the proximity between the two teams. Uh, it fostered a different kind of working relationship and different ideas and creativity and true partnership. So, um, it, it, it was a good thing all the way around, I think, for both entities. And so, you know, if that comes to play, um, um, I can only imagine the various, we talked about through lines, you know, entities and organizations that would make perfect sense to share space um, with first five LA, so. Wanted to thank you for, again, your creativity and thinking about ways in which you could, um, raise money. In short, shore up our budget in creative different ways. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Martinez, anything from you? Okay, excellent. All right, done, and you're in?
Thank you.
So now we will go to public comment for Agenda Item Six, Sub A and B.
Confirming that we do have two public comments, we will be doing them in order received, beginning with Yoli Flores, who is joining us virtually on Zoom, and then Winnie Wexler, who is in person. Ms. Flores, you do have two minutes, beginning now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mitchell and Board of Commissioners. My name is Yoli Flores and I'm President and CEO of Families and Schools.
Hey, Yoli!
Hello. I'm here to speak on Goal Three, Children prenatal to five, having a solid foundation for well-being, lifelong learning and success. When we speak of providing children with the foundations for learning, we're essentially nurturing the roots from which lifelong learning and success will grow. This foundation encompasses a broad spectrum of competency, skills and knowledge. But today, I'd like to emphasize the critical importance of giving kids pre-literacy skills. Pre-literacy skills are the building blocks of reading and writing, and they serve as the very foundation upon which all future academic achievements are constructed. I'm particularly focused on pre and early literacy, because as many of us know, reading is the gateway to all learning and success. For most children who can't read, it is practically game over. Reaching self-actualization will be difficult to achieve. Unfortunately, only forty-three percent of third graders in LA County are meeting state standards in reading proficiency. For kids in poverty, black and brown kids and our EL students, the data are even more troubling. According to twenty-one, twenty-two state data, seventy to eighty-five percent of these students are not meeting standards. Clearly, we're not setting the foundation for learning for too many children. While we can blame the pandemic for these results, the literacy crisis is actually not new. We've been here for a very long time, but we cannot allow it to continue. As you build out Goal Three, I invite first five to consider elevating pre and early literacy as an indicator with crease key strategies and join a growing number of leaders in Los Angeles who are working to lift early literacy as a priority for our region. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, public witness?
Ms. Wexler?
Hi, thanks so much. Fabulous presentations and, um, sitting there, I was like bursting at several points, but, um, the, the key point I wanted was to have been thinking about is, you know, first five has a limited budget. The goals are huge, I mean, so aspirational. And we don't really know as an organization, nor does really anyone, um, how much the county is spending already on so many of the initiatives that each of you is involved with and so many others that are relevant to first five achieving its goals. And having been engaged personally for the last three years in the Equity and County Contracting Initiative that Supervisor Mitchell's office really started and was pushing forward. Uh, I think there's a real opportunity here for us to be asking, or at least for us to better know, what is the county already spending? And how can we best then guide our dollars to achieve the goals that we've set? So, so I think really my comment is in the category of indicators. It would be an indicator how much money is being spent towards each of the different elements within the goal, you know, to achieve the goals. Um, so I just want to throw that out there. And also along those lines, as you're meeting with, um, the CBOs, the community organizations, it would be great to know about how much do they currently get in terms of county funding and or city funding? And is there stuff that we as an organization could be doing uh, to help augment community funding, not just from our own budget, but more broadly within the county? So to really become an advocate for both transparency and county funding on these issues and leveraging our own dollars to fill the gap. and leveraging our own dollars to fill the gaps or to address existing needs more that we all believe are really worthwhile.
Thank you, Ms. Wexler. And we actually have one more public comment from Mr. Justin Blakely.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Justin Blakely here representing Crystal Stairs. Wanted to just one, give greetings and one say, very excited to see the work being done in six A in terms of the strategies, the goals and what's the North Star, for lack of other words, of where first five will be heading in the next five years. Also switching hats, come here also representing as vice chair of the Policy Roundtable for Childcare and Development, representing my supervisor's district. And so really just excited to be here with you all, but throwing back my Crystal Stairs hat on again. Really excited to continue to be here and really engage in these conversations with you all. It's been a really great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our public comments for this item.
We got public comments, public, raise the roof, yay. All right, thank you so much for being a part of this experience with us. We appreciate that very much. Moving on to agenda item seven, which is general public comment. Do we have any? General public comment is an opportunity to comment on items that are not reflected in today's agenda.
Confirming we do not have any general public comments for today's.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. We're gonna, we, you know, scheduled to adjourn at four thirty, we're gonna give you nine minutes back in your day. Don't ever say we didn't ever give you anything. Mary, thank you very much for being here today representing DMH. It was important to have your agency's perspective, so thank you very much. Anything else we need to do?
Lots of gratitude to Commissioner Martinez and you're including. Appreciated.
Yes, very much. Thank, I know it's hard to participate virtually, I know. So make sure you knew we saw you, so thank you for your time. And with that, we stand adjourned until the October
twelfth.
Twelfth, our next regular onboard meeting will be October twelfth. Thank you so much. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.